Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to hear all those young voices saying the pledge here, we don't often have that. Okay, I have, let's see, will you call the roll please?
Mayor Knudsen.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Yakub.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Burchill.
Here.
Okay, Chief Jensen, come on up, we've got a little presentation for you, where is he, where is he, there he is.
The guy carrying the chairs.
Chief Jensen, on behalf of the common council and the citizens of the city of Hudson, I do hereby recognize and officially congratulate you on your recent graduation from the 242nd session of the National Academy of the Federal Bureau of Investigation at Quantico, Virginia. Be it hereby known to all that we extend best wishes to Chief Jensen for continued success, progress, and leadership in our community.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
The Yellow Brick Road?
The Yellow Brick Road.
The Yellow Brick Road, it's, they say it's 6.1 miles, but it's more like seven. You start off on the marine base and you go over the obstacles, of course, you go through windows, over barriers, down ropes, down hilly rocky terrain, then climb ropes back up the rocky terrain, run around, go underneath barbed wire, through some muddy obstacles, and then there's a 3.4 mile run afterwards up and downhill back to the FBI base. When you're all done, when you've completed that, you get a yellow brick on the Yellow Brick Road, so I have one back in my office. This is totally unexpected, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there is anyone here tonight who would like to address the council about any item that is not on tonight's agenda, that might have an impact on the city of Hudson in the future, or come before the council at a future meeting, this is your chance to come forward and be heard. Anyone like to address the council tonight? Not on an item that's on the agenda, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Andrea Jorgensen with Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I'm here tonight to invite you all and the community of Hudson to come on down to the Spirit of the St. Croix Art Festival this weekend, will be held this Saturday and Sunday, September 25th and 26th, and we're looking forward to a great event with excellent food and outstanding showing of local artisans. We're looking for 65 artists to be there, and we're providing acoustical entertainment on both Saturday and Sunday for everyone to enjoy, so I encourage everyone to come out this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? How about some of those young people, do you have anything to say, you want to get on TV? Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda items, will you read those please?
To approve the regular and closed session minutes, meeting minutes of September 7th, 2010, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $511,256.66, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website, to approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period September 21st, 2010, through June 30th, 2011, and the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used October 22nd, 2010, at the annual CCH Wine Fest. Additional information is available in the clerk's office on request, to approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailers license to the Christian Community Campus Foundation Incorporated to sell wine during their annual Wine Fest event on October 22nd, 2010, at Wintergreen, 1312 Wisconsin Street, Hudson, Wisconsin, to approve the issuance of a Class B beer, Class B liquor license to Apple Minnesota LLC Doing Business as Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill contingent on payment of the prorated license fees and surrender of the license currently held by Applebee's Restaurants Incorporated LLC, sorry, that's Applebee's Restaurants North LLC, to approve no parking on the south side of Orange Street from First Street West to the dead end with funding to come from the sign budget, to approve closing Second Street from St. Croix Street to Cooley Road from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM, 3:30 PM to 4:30 PM on Friday, September 24th, 2010, for the homecoming parade, to approve closing Second Street between Locust and Walnut Streets from 6:30 PM to 7:45 PM on Friday, November 26th, 2010, for the light-up night parade, to approve the St. Patrick's Fall Festival 5K and 10K foot races at 9:00 AM on Saturday, October 2nd, 2010, to approve the annual For Pete's Sake 5K and 10K foot races at 9:00 AM on Saturday, October 25th, 2010, starting and ending at the hockey arena, to approve the policy that red-orange flags will be attached to the top of signs for the first 30 days when a new traffic control sign is erected, to place on file the quarterly reports of the wastewater director and the EMS chief, that is all.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion in second to approve the consent agenda, roll call vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Move on to the finance committee, items, number four, reconsider quotes submitted for the fire department overhead doors of public safety committee, pardon me, public safety building. Finance committee recommends that we approve the bid from Mike's Garage Door.
So moved.
Mike's Garage Door in the amount of $29,675 to include the electrical modifications.
Second.
There's a motion by Wyland, second, O'Malley, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes, that's number four. Number seven, consider the St. Croix EMS participation in the St. Croix County Sheriff's Department Emergency Response Unit team. This is a subject that was discussed last year, we decided not to participate, they have now found a way to get grant funding for the body armor that's required, the proposal is to enter an intergovernmental agreement with the county. Can you read the actual motion from finance, what Lee's final motion was? We did recommend approving this at finance, there's some tweaking going on in the council.
Recommend the participation of the program with the finalization of the payroll numbers and final approval by council, legal council.
Legal council. So I recommend approval.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Motion's approved. Number eight, library board presentation regarding the preliminary 2011 budget proposal, we've got, let me interrupt myself for a minute. For Applebee's, I know you were on the consent agenda, you may not realize, but your item's approved and done.
Sounds good, thank you.
So I know you've been sitting here waiting for an hour, if I don't think of it right now, you'll probably be here for another hour, so.
I appreciate it.
Wondering, when are they going to get to me? Okay, we have Library Board President Roy Schoberg, Library Director Linda Donaldson, number of members of the Friends of the Library, of the Library Foundation, of the Library Board, and of the public. We had a presentation from Mr. Schoberg at the Finance Committee and had some very brief discussion or deliberation, and the outcome was a motion to recommend that we come to the full council, start over with the full presentation, and so, take it away, Roy.
Thanks for allowing me to do a warm act. This is the newest and latest PowerPoint presentation that will be displayed, so take one and pass the other, I do have 10 of them. Well, I have the best of jobs and the toughest of jobs, first I'll talk about how good it is. It's a great job being the president of that new sparkling clean, brand-new public library, which I'm sure is the envy of the area. I'm sure that everybody on this city council has heard compliments about what an upgrade it has been. As the president, of course, I get to read lots of little memos, and so does Linda, our library director, and it's really nothing but good news about how much they love the facility. So, again, that's tons of fun for me, and I have the chance to interact with the community in that regard, and I take a lot of pride, as everybody in this community should, for moving into that wonderful new enhanced facility. So we're going to show a few slides, first of all, to just let everybody look how beautiful this facility is, there's the front, and then we go inside, there's our lobby area, and there's our circulation desks, these are some of our computer terminals, so anybody in the community, for no cost, can come in and use a high-speed internet service, and that's been a real big appeal, there's people lining up to come into those and register for those terminals. Imagine being laid off from your job and needing a way to get onto a database, this is the way to do it, so it's, this is one of the services that public libraries provide throughout the state, is access to high-speed internet at no cost to anybody walking in the door. In addition to that, let me just say, we have Wi-Fi service, so if you come in with your own laptop, you don't like to be home alone on your laptop, you come on in and you commiserate with some of your neighbors, so it's another great aspect of our library. Next slide, there's, you can see a number of the books on the second floor, and then the children's area, and our friendly staff. So, things are going really well, let me add one more comment, and that is, just last Monday, a week ago today, our board met, and we approved the installation of automatic door openers for our disabled patrons, and so that's underway, it's been ordered, and Linda, do you know the installation date, is there one scheduled?
I don't.
Okay, well, that'll happen, that was requested, of course, by our wheelchair patrons, because it's hard to open up those large, heavy doors, this way it's going to be an automatic process. So the lighting in the lobby is just spectacular, it's really a welcoming environment there. But what are the numbers showing? Are they good news, bad news? Well, here's what's happening already, what this illustration, what this slide up there shows, is that even right now, we're seeing a doubling of new registrations, so not only did the town of St. Joseph experience this, but also Hudson, the village of North Hudson, and our own city, and in fact, I got some numbers here, the number of new card registrations for Hudson, July versus July, 80 a year ago, 240 this year, threefold increase. Let's go to August, see if that trend continues, as you can see it has, all four municipalities, it's a doubling, the excitement, everybody's coming in, and I think Linda's already indicated that the registration so far in September is staying way up. Let's look at our materials.
Circulation.
This is kind of the traffic flow for a library, it's the number of books in, DVDs in, all those things, books on tape, all those things that people come in and check out, that's what a library's business is about, a lot, a big part of it. You can see there's a little dip there, and that's this current year, so with this brand-new library, why would we have a dip in materials? Well, there's a good answer for that, and that is that we were closed, so we were closed for six weeks, and during that period of time, not too many books were checked out, but we're picking up again at the 31,000 per month level, we anticipate next year it's going to be closer to 380, I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't go hit and exceed 400,000 next year, when we finally can increase our hours of open again. Next, let's look at our staffing. Our staffing, for budgetary reasons, and also to accumulate a little bit of a war chest as we knew that this day was going to come, when we would need, with this enhanced facility, increased operating costs, and we wanted to be able to cushion that blow, to basically tell each of our municipalities that we'll ask for incremental increases, rather than just a huge 25% increase in year X. So this is the way that your Board of Trustees designed it, was to spend our surplus over the next three years and grant each of the municipalities the opportunity to kind of step up with us. So staffing needs result in some things happening, let's look at the next slide there. Of critical importance to any library is its hours of operation. We have a sister city here that we can easily compare with, and that's River Falls, so Hudson has been open now 48 and a half hours per week, 48 and a half hours per week, the city of River Falls manages to open for 62 hours per week, and we almost do the same amount of circulation, their circulation does exceed ours, but we're pretty close. So imagine what our circulation would be if we were open even more hours. So it could be on any given morning, when I'm at the library, it might be 9 o'clock, it might be 10 o'clock, and I hear a bang at the door, and what the bang at the door is, a young woman with two or three children in tow, having just dropped off their other child at school, and now they want access to the library, and sorry, we're closed. That's our number one complaint that we're hearing right now, is that these hours have to be extended in order to serve our community.
Pardon, didn't you say at finance you opened at 11, right?
Yes, we opened at 11, did I just misspeak?
No, you didn't say, you didn't say when you opened.
I'm sorry, yeah, we're open at 11 o'clock, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturdays, we open up at 9 o'clock, and we close at 1 o'clock. River Falls manages to be open a little bit longer on Saturdays, and they are also open on Sundays, too. So that our shortage is the biggest complaint, now, that our shortage can result in some dollars, cost to us, too. See, when someone in the town of Hudson decides, well, if City of Hudson Library is closed, I think I'll go to River Falls, then we get a bill, and when that happens from the town of Hudson or the town of St. Joseph, those residents visiting our neighboring libraries, we get a bill. The bill we just got for River Falls for next year is over $22,000. So I think, and what we're seeing with all these new card registration, is some of these people are going to decide to stay home and come back here, because every, every single item of circulation that they check out here is no cost to us, versus a cost of about $200, excuse me, $2.65 per item at River Falls. That all adds up, as my number just indicated. Next slide. So, why am I here? Well, I said there's a good part of this job, and then there's a bad part of the job. Could you imagine asking your parents and then for some tuition support, and then finding out that you have to get permission from four parents? That's what my job is, I sought the permission from this town of St. Joseph last week, and I have scheduled to get the permission from our other two municipalities in the next couple weeks. So this speech will probably get pretty good by the time I'm done. So, we have some things that are happening right now. Our rent, let me just speak about rent, while we were at our old facility, we had a janitor, and we paid $65,000 rent at that facility, now we have a janitor and we're paying $120,000 rent. Now, you could also say that that janitor is another full-time equivalent, and that's fine, but then we wouldn't be paying that much rent either. So one way or the other, we have some savings if we didn't have to, I mean, it comes up that when we have a janitor supplied, we're paying for it one way or the other, I think we're paying full fare for it as part of our rent that we're paying to the city. So this next year, we're paying $10,000 per month, and a little bit on top of that with cost of living. Our square footage, that's what we're really enjoying right now, increased from 12,000 to 19,000. That's pretty nice, but as Linda will tell you in a little bit, that requires more coverage by people to make it safe for all of our patrons. As I said before, the surplus, yes, we have a surplus, and yes, we're going to use it, and our own Board of Trustees said, what's the prudent way to do that? And we have, again, four parents that we have to get permission for, and so the smartest way is that sooner or later, we have to break even, we can't just keep spending more money than we have. So, with our expenses up, and all of our revenue coming in from our municipalities, the only thing we can do is say, we need more funds on an incremental basis in order to get to a basic level of support, and at that point in time, after three years, by 2014, we will have used up all of our surplus. It's also at that time, and maybe two years before, that I will have already made presentations to our neighboring foundations for support, and as long as we're at a break-even point, I think we can make a good pitch to our area foundations to help us with the capital funding in order to take over the ownership and operation of the entire facility, because that's also part of your long-range plan, of course, is for the joint library to buy the current facility. But I wouldn't want to be bleeding to death at the time that I'm out there asking for area foundation support either, and that would happen if you just make us burn through our surplus, and then come running to all the municipalities asking for a 30% increase that final year. Back when we signed our joint agreement, everybody knew that this day was going to come, the tuition's going to come due. I read it to the Finance Committee, I think you all have a copy of the joint agreement, the final whereas on the front page refers to the fact that when we have an enhanced facility, that'll be the time that we're expecting an increase in operating expenses. Well, that time has come, and the prudent thing is to recognize that, and to agree that our obligation to our co-partners is to meet this in a prudent manner, and that, what is prudent was really decided by the Board of Trustees. So we have four different municipalities with a Board of Trustees, and we had, we went over this budget a number of times. The solution is to get to break even in three years. If we're not at break even, what can we say to the foundations, and how are we operating? So we are going to use all of our surplus. Here's why we're going to be using our surplus. We have some big changes, if you look at the budget request itself, which is this one right here, it starts off, it should be stapled together, it's a letter addressed to Mayor Knudsen and your city administrator, dated August 30th. If you go to the third page, you'll see that I've highlighted a couple items. One of the items is health insurance, and we all know there's little control that we have over health insurance, especially when we have union employees, and I'm told, here's what the cost is going to go up, so I have no control over this, I'm not just granting this. So this is up 21%, we already talked about the rent, but the other thing I wanted to allude to is the 41% increase in the reimbursement to other libraries, why is this happening? Well, it's really a good thing that all the libraries, when we have to give money to another library for reimbursement, we do so at 100% of their, of their published cost. So, what the county has agreed to do, if you look at the top there, for our revenue source, where it says St. Croix County, you'll see that now we're going to be at 100%, that's still pending in the county, I believe the Finance Committee has approved at 100%, I don't think it's been finalized yet, but then we would receive funds for the people that live in the area, not in the municipalities, so for example, someone in the town of Troy, when they come to visit our library, it's the county that writes us the check to cover their visit to our library. So all of those people that visit our library, we're going to get a check next year for about $65,000, as you can see, but, at the bottom there, where it's showing 32,000, Devin, if you can go through a couple slides, I think, is that it? Okay, so you got the shorter version of the slideshow. Okay, there was another slide that said, the total amount that, and it is going to be in your handouts that you just received, the total amount that we are going to be writing checks to is going to be closer to 47,000. So where you see that line of 32,000 back on this first page of the budget request, cross that out, put in $47,000, it's going to be somewhere in between that.
Where'd you get that number from?
The 47,000, that was calculated by Jim O'Connor, and I have the math calculations as to how that comes up, but for example, I can show you a copy even in my folders today about the bill that we got from River Falls for 22,000, that's the largest of the bills, it's a bill.
We have 15,000 negative debts.
Potentially, potentially, it depends on what the county does.
What, what factor are you applying for increased utilization of our library with the improved services, I mean, I imagine we'll see more, you've been saying visitors.
It'd be a little bit too speculative, this is kind of what I'm hoping for, it's not as bad, but see, this number, that's right in here, Dean, it's based upon the, excuse me, I'm here, is based upon the 2009 numbers, all right, so this is already locked in.
And that, that county payment, and the materials here say it comes from visits, but it's really rural circulation that comes through that, right, it's a circ. If you don't check anything out, we don't, we don't get any payment.
Right, it's circulation to residents without the library, so we get St. Croix County.
That's a fine point, but everywhere where it says visits, it should be circ.
Circulation, right.
But if, and, but like he says, anytime one of some Hudson people go to River Falls, we, we get billed for that circ.
Yeah.
And it's not the visit, it's the circ.
If they check something out in River Falls, we get billed for about $2.25 for them renting that book. If they check out a movie there and it seems free, really isn't free, there's a bill coming to the taxpayers here for about $2.25.
So is that.
Don't go to River Falls anymore, is what you're trying to say.
Yeah, we have to be nice to our neighbor libraries.
But to that point, I have this question.
Yes.
Does that apply to books that are brought in through the Moore system, say from River Falls or Altoona, or is it only if you check it out in River Falls?
So only if you check it out.
Okay, so just don't go there, do it online.
Although the Moore system is not free either.
No, I understand that, but I just, I was.
In fact, on this budget, where it says the IFLS fee, that is the Moore system, so we are writing them, reimbursing them for their services of running this internet service for us, $22,000.
So I have one more question, Roy.
Yes.
Is it okay if I interrupt?
Yes.
It's fine with me.
So your reimbursement, reimbursement to other libraries, was that 32,344, should be 47,000?
It could be that high, depending on the action by the county.
Okay, but in like, would our income go up by that percentage also then, on the other side?
No, I already have the number at the, the best possible number, so at 100%, we're at 65,000, this year we were paid at 85%, which was 55,000, so that's a difference of 10,000 of revenue to us, yeah, but because the other libraries are more expensive than ours, it ends up costing us more, actually, when we go to 100%.
And to the point here, this is, this is circulation 30,000, these numbers aren't going to change, they're historical.
That's, that's correct, these are historical, yeah.
And there's no projection for the change for us having an enhanced library that attracts more visitors and has more circulation over the desk to rural patrons from Troy and elsewhere.
That won't affect 2010 at all, money in, money out in 2010, that will, that will impact what I say to you a year from now. It could well be that that, these expenses go down dramatically, hopefully with this new facility, that will in fact happen, and we might be already experiencing that with the larger amounts of circulate, or new registrations happening here.
Why does it not affect 2010? I mean, the change in numbers will be happening immediately, right, it probably has been happening for the last few months.
We're always a year behind. We're always a year behind.
You're a year behind?
Yeah.
We're always a year behind.
They'll recalculate in two thousand eleven based on the two thousand ten numbers and give you the payment based on that.
We'll get the numbers sometime mid-next year for our planning, and that money will flow into us in two thousand twelve. The thing that I have to talk about on this budget is the add-one full-time equivalent. I, I think in prior planning, when the, the talk was, well, we'll move into this new facility and we'll just spend the surplus and you won't have to have any investment increase, that didn't envision, I don't think, being prudent with our staffing. And I want, now at this time, my library, our library director to come up and talk to everybody about the need for an additional staff person. So this is our library director, Linda Donaldson.
Thank you, Roy. Again, I'm Linda Donaldson, and I thank you for hearing from me tonight. One of the changes in the new facility is we have to staff two levels of the building. We also, because of our economic times, we're seeing a big increase in individuals coming to our library that maybe don't have the computer skills you and I have. Because that was part of our job. We learned as we, remember when we first started getting those computers, and it's been a learning process every day. Well, these individuals, they never did visit the library when they were employed, and now they need to come into the library and, um, they need to use the technology. And I'm going to just read this first paragraph of an article I got from one of the friends, ladies on the Friends group, and it's talking about trends in libraries today. Libraries is the center of the community life. People line up outside our libraries before buildings open to get to a computer or ask the staff for help finding a job, creating a resume, filing unemployment benefits. Classes on basic computer skills are in high demand. After-school, teens flock to libraries for homework, help, and tutoring. Community meetings, cultural events, and storytimes for children make libraries active hubs for families and neighborhoods. And that is what's really honestly happened here in Hudson since we moved into the new building. The other, as like, um, Roy stated earlier, we have a huge increase of individuals coming to the library, new patrons, and we have a big growth in the amount of materials being circulated. You mentioned the Moore system. When I receive materials from the Moore system, I try to be as efficient as possible in the, meaning that when it, the materials are unloaded from the carts, I use low-end staffing. And actually, when they're unloaded from the bins, I'm using volunteers every day. When the materials are checked in, I'm using my low-end staffing. Individuals that only receive seven fifty to eight dollars an hour, a lot of those individuals are sixteen to eighteen years of age. One of the other things that's happening is, due to the lack of full-time staff, I'm starting to use low-end individuals at the reference desk. That means a lot of your sixteen to eighteen-year-olds in the evening are working at the desk. I'm very concerned about the security in that area also, when you have the low-end I will have to say that, um, I've tried hard to be very efficient in trying to cut down on the time we perform tasks at the library. And we even go to the point where we, we step back and say, does this task need to include this ta- step? And still, can it provide good quality service to the public without that step involved? As I said earlier, I'm, there's a lot of new trends in the building. One of the things we would do with this new individuals, it would be a public relations communication individual. The public nowadays wants an up-to-date webpage all the time, so they can find out about events, they want Facebook. Other trends in this new library is the study rooms and the meeting rooms. It's getting used heavily, it, it's just amazing how many people are in this library and how grateful they are to the board for putting us in this la- building. I can't say that enough. And that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I'd like to now continue on with my comments, thank you, Linda. You know, you mentioned, Linda, the, the new trends of a library, what a library offers all of our low-income citizens and those citizens who do not have jobs or have just lost their jobs, is free internet access. And I think, uh, in order to have better hours for tho- these folks, I think it would be a great service for us. Now, even with one additional staff person, our total staff compensation as a percentage of our overall budget remains at a low of fifty-eight percent, which is below what the library board several years ago wanted to track as a cap, which was sixty-five percent. So we're still quite well below that. But there's other benchmarks that I want to allude to as well. In the blue sheet that I have before you here, which is a comparison, and in deference to your mayor and in respect of his, uh, calling to task, some of the prior comparisons that were done, I used his list. The, his list of comparables, and then I added one more in, Mayor, and that was Northshore, and I put JT after it. And JT because that's another joint library, it's somewhere situated like ours, a little bit smaller, they're at twenty-five thousand, uh, in service population, we're at thirty thousand nine seventy-eight, which is our four municipalities plus half of the town of Troy. You look at the averages, you see the averages just above the double line there. And with all of our comparables, the staff full-time equivalent average is eleven point nine seven, and as of the last, end of last year, we were at nine point seven six. So even with up one, if you were to add the janitor on top of that, we're still only at the average, we're not rising above anybody, and we're still at very low costs here. So if you look at the far right where it says costs of circulation at a dollar ninety-three, there isn't another library that's operating any more efficiently than that one. So we are using taxpayers' money very, very wisely and frugally. In addition to that comparison, there's also what are called the Wisconsin Standards by the Department of Public Instruction. This is the same department that heads all the schools, they also head all the libraries. They publish standards. The standards, if you care to read them, are right here. I get to read them. One section of the standards refers to quantitative comparisons. And with respect to the number of full-time equivalents that should be expected of a library in our size band, you would look at the, uh, on the first page, and it's the very first entry, it says full-time equivalent staff per one thousand. So I've already done the math for you, and if you multiply our service population of thirty-one thousand times point oh four, I believe you get twelve point four. So at twelve point four, we would then rise to the level of being in the lowest thirty percent percentile. So what the Wisconsin Standards want everybody, all libraries to be operating on is no less than the basic. I'll take the basic. And I think we could sell, if we were, uh, operating at the basic level, we could approach our foundations and say, we are getting at least that level of support from our municipalities. What's the moderate? The moderate would mean that we're up to fifteen employees. And why would, why would a library want more employees, just to spend money? I don't think so. What, what they're saying here is that with the added full-time employees, you're looking at better services. Now, we're not asking for that at this stage. We might get to that down the road when everybody's wanting and clamoring for other programs and more education, more training. We've been approached by some nonprofits that, uh, connected with SCORE in order to set up, uh, training workshops right in our library, and I, I hope we can plot, uh, provide those Anyway, back on those, the same standards here, as far as hours, if you flip the she- sheet over, the hours open for a library of twenty-five thousand to forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine at the basic level, which means the bottom thirty percent, or their seventy percent are doing more, that would be if we were open fifty-nine hours. I think you heard me when I said we're at forty-eight point five. We need to do better than that for this community. Planning for the future, just a few more remarks, and then I'll ask for questions. We can continue to obtain municipal support so that our library can have funds to operate at near the basic level, then we'll be in a stronger position to request the private funding for the acquisition of the building and the phase two of the planned remodeling. But imagine approaching our area foundations with only forty-eight point five hours per week of support. With the two thousand eleven budget approval, the fundraising planning will have the best opportunity for success. And I conclude my remarks by requesting the approval by this council tonight of our budget request, which was already approved by the Board of Trustees of the elected, or, excuse me, the appointed officials of all four municipalities. It involves an increase of seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents for the community of Hudson. I think it's a wise investment in your library.
Say that number again, Roy.
The increase is seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. You'll find it on the last page of my budget, the last page that's already been corrected for the population shift. I did a quick calculation, by the way, and if we were to pay a share based upon equalized value, we'd be paying seventeen thousand more. But we're, we're splitting our costs with our three other municipalities based upon population only, and as a result, we have a little bit of a benefit in that regard. So the new amount would be two hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents. And let me just speak to why I would like a action tonight, if at all possible. I know you have other budget figures to go through, and this is the first one you've probably heard with some particularity. The job of presenting the same package to four municipalities is daunting. We presented at the Town of Saint Joseph, they realized this, they realized that they had somewhat of a, a s- a duty to their other co-partners, and they've already led the way by approving this. I would like this action because then it makes it a lot simpler for me to say, well, this is what the two other municipalities are saying, rather than, well, I have to go back and see what these people say. It just would make it easier. It's going to be daunting enough as it is. But to hear directly from the Town of Saint Joseph, I would like to have Dan Gavin, who is a board member, he's one of the trustees of the library, and he was at the Town of Saint Joseph meeting with me, and I'd just like to have him make a few remarks, and then we'll come back for questions. Dan?
Try to keep this brief. First of all, uh, the vote at the Town of Saint Joseph was five to zero, which, as a former board member, uh, I was very pleased and almost shocked about. To get a unanimous decision from a board that, at times, is very stingy, okay? Prudent with their money and so forth. But the board made their decision for a number of reasons. The primary reason was, is that they acknowledged the fact that they signed an agreement, which primary objective was to be where we are today in an enhanced facility. And part of that agreement acknowledged the fact that there was going to be an increase in operating costs. And in addition to that, they really were proud of what the library board has done in putting together a plan that gradually got us to a break-even point, and acknowledging the fact that we're going to use the surplus up to help us gradually get there. So I'm hoping that, um, the council here and the two other municipalities will follow in their footsteps and make this, uh, the best place in town to go, go get a book. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know the hour's getting a little late, there's two young, a couple young people that would like to make a little presentation. Are you ready? Okay. With your permission.
Hello. Hello, my name's, uh, Luke Erickson, and I am kind of encouraging Roy to have the extended hours at the library, 'cause during the summer, I'm gonna be doing sports, football, basketball, stuff, baseball, stuff like that. And after that, I am probably gonna want to go check out some books at the library, and, well, I don't have any time since sports end at, well, after like twelve o'clock or something, so I have no time to go to the library on the weekends. So, yeah, I would really encourage people to extend the hours at the library.
Thank you, Luke.
Hi, my name's Anna Arthur, and I am encouraging library hours too, because usually when I get books, I get them on Mondays, 'cause I have cello and stuff like that during the week. And when I read all of them, it's the weekend by then, and I have karate during Saturday mornings, so I don't have time to check out books, and I just don't have any books for the, um, weekend, so I would really like it if we could extend the hours, so, uh, all the children and the adults could read more during the weekend.
Thank you.
That's it for children, or youth? Well, thank you, and I guess I'll open it for questions, and I think there's also comments from some of the citizens here as well, so how would you prefer?
Well, that's up to the council. You want to ask questions on the presentation first? Try to clarify things with him. Do you want to hear from the public?
It's a pleasure. Anyone have a pending question burning on your mind?
You do?
As, as you have, over three, over the next three years, you're looking at individual increases. At that same time, you're, you're burning down your, um, your...
Surplus.
Your surplus. So at the end of three, three years, your surplus is zero, and you're at a, at a funding level to continue operations. Now, the, as the mayor pointed out, I would assume that when we come back next year here to look at this, we'll be also looking at the changes in, in how much money we might be bringing back from other municipalities, so, not from us keeping more of the circulation to ourselves. So is there a possibility that these could be adjusted next year based on the fact that we're getting greater circulation here in our library?
This library is so brand-new, yes, of course, we'll make adjustments to it, this is our, this is what we know right now, and the news is good, that circulation is up. Our, our cost per circ will go up this next year because we are going to now be showing that we're paying this larger rent. So almost magically, it'll look like we're not as efficient. Because now, instead of having a surplus and adding on to it every year at minimum expenditures, now we're expending, uh, and even with your six point four three percent, just so you understand this from the budget, we're ripping in to eighty thousand dollars of our surplus. And it might be ninety-five thousand. Part of the reason it's only eighty thousand is because the Friends of the library have also agreed to participate in this gap, uh, period of time, and they've already made their payment of fifteen thousand dollars for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead.
I have a question on the library, on raising the money to buy out the library. You referred a little bit that the rent of a hundred and twenty thousand is excessive or high? Do you believe you can operate that building for less than a hundred and twenty thousand a year, if you owned it?
A hundred and twenty thousand, including a jan- janitor, is appropriate. Yep. If it was just no, no janitor included, it would be fairly high. I, I think, uh, the city administrator made an estimate some time ago as to what the operations would be, and right now, it's a split building, and we're getting the information in on the utilities, so a year from now, I'll be able to have that pretty close. But I do expect that when the building is completely bought and paid for, and now all we're paying for is, uh, janitorial service and utilities in that very efficient building, that we'll be able to... that we'll be able to manage those expenses together with building up a sinking fund for repair costs. But it's not going to sink down to sixty-five thousand again. No, I'm anticipating we're going to be spending a hundred, a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand either in rent or in building operating costs, of course. It's a beautiful facility, and it's twice what we had.
All right.
Well, one question. What have we done to increase our volunteer ranks? Do we have any sort of strategy in place? Have we increased our volunteer numbers?
Huge, but in addition to this new full-time equivalent being a volunteer coordinator, I'll now introduce Patty Zeiss.
I work with the volunteers at the library. The Teen Advisory Council last month put in thirty-six hours, regularly library, regular library volunteers put in eighty-four, and the Friends Volunteers put in a hundred and seventy hours. That's two hundred and ninety hours are the equivalent of two full-time staff members. We've just started a spreadsheet to keep track of all the volunteer hours and exactly what they're doing, and we're really amazed at how many hours people are putting in. Every week to two weeks, we're having a new volunteer come forward. That involves a lot of training from the staff and from us, other, other, other volunteers. We, so we anticipate an increase in the number of volunteers, and the ages of our volunteers range from early teens up to their eighties. Our volunteer activities list is long. We operate and maintain the history room and the collection there, which is our rarest and most valuable local history books. We assist and fund children's programs. We answer patrons' questions. We raise money. We just donated fifteen thousand dollars. We run a youth bookstore. We've just started selling books online, and we also raise funds for memberships. We help write policies. We give tours. We organize, clean, and decorate, and we promote the library and literacy in Hudson. And throughout the world, we donate books to teachers if they're using them for classroom purposes. We donate to Grace Place, the jail. We donate to servicemen and women in uniform and to Turning Point. And we've also donated, donated to many people who go on missions trip to places like Jamaica, Africa, and Thailand. So, yes, we have seen a very strong buy-in from the community willing to donate their time and energies. Thank you.
Well, and part of the reason I ask that question is because I know we had talked about it prior to the building being purchased, that presumably it would be a big draw to get volunteers in. What I'm concerned about is there's a specified amount of money, and I am thinking about this from a family's perspective. If, if you knew you had a certain amount of money and you needed to stretch it for as long as you could, you'd find some ways to do that. I'm just afraid adding a full-time equivalent right now is not one way to stretch it. And I guess part of what's concerning me a little bit is, I mean, do we really have staff doing computer training? Because that's not something that I expect our library staff are doing. That seems to me like a great opportunity for someone who's got a computer background, who's maybe laid off, who's retired. You know, have we publicized that we need people to help with computer training? I know you mentioned these classes through SCORE. I just think there's some things that, that our staff need to, I don't know. There needs to be some clarification as to how far they will go with things like computer training.
Mayor, if I may, I believe we are getting away from questions for Roy and into actually discussing the merits of the proposal. So at this time, so that we can have the discussion of the merits of the proposal, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget increase of six point four-three percent for next year.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the budget increase six point four-three percent. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I had hoped to get my question answered, actually. You know, and it just, it pertains to, you know, what do our staff do? And are there some areas that, you know, because of the economy and because of what the increased number of computers we have, there's responsibilities that we're not, it's not our intention to staff for? And that's not to be insensitive to people's needs, but just to recognize the staff are there for, does anyone understand my question?
Can I interject here before?
It is a general trend in library services to provide computer services, not just, here's the machine, but also some fundamental instruction as to how to get it up and running, searching for databases. You know, the same woman that you're describing on a fixed budget, she can terminate her local internet service at her home and save thirty bucks a month and come down to the library if we're open.
Right. And presumably, if she had a computer at home, she'd know how to use a one at the library. But my point is, you know, is there a need that a volunteer could meet that, right now, we're trying to have staff fill, when the reality is, that's, you know, that's not the, we don't have that number of staff available to, you could, you could...
Laurie, with all due respect, you just heard the phenomenal report of the amount of volunteers.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know how you can make that comment.
No, my comment is, do we need...
The staff has been strung so thin already that without the volunteers, we would already be falling apart. We're asking for one full-time equivalent.
Okay. My comment was just, should we be soliciting volunteer help specifically for, you know, people who have computer knowledge? And you could, I'll just stop there.
Didn't you just say you got two hundred and ninety volunteers? Isn't that part of what they're doing, as well as having maybe someone who's a little more educated on staff do that? I would expect that if I needed help, you gotta ask somebody.
You're better off asking a sixteen-year-old kid.
Probably. I have no doubt.
I, I gave the example at Saint Joseph about how nice it used to be when you used to go up to True Value Hardware and Bruce Mueller was there. And I'm just a stupid lawyer, he would tell me how to fix things. Now you go to our library, you want to run into a librarian that knows where the books are, knows resources, knows databases, knows how to get you hooked up to the computer, those types of essential services, so that you're not just wandering around with people that are, you know, real part-timers or volunteers that are not expected to know that stuff.
The strongest thing I heard, and I definitely respect all the volunteer work, too, is the, is the number of hours we're open. I mean, and to me, to allow, you know, to have one more full-time equivalent that allows us to be open in the mornings during the week, that allows us to extend those times, will increase our circulation, it'll increase the, over the funding of people coming to our city to, to use our library. It seems like there'd be a lot of paybacks that, both from an access perspective and from a financial perspective, to have that additional person there.
May I, may I add to that comment? Because this is one of the most peculiar things I've learned about library, and I view it as a business. It's a given that what people expect from a city like Hudson is a good police department, good fire coverage, and a good library. That's just part of the culture that is expected. But as a business proposition, if you don't, if you work at CompUSA and you send away a customer who then buys their computer from Best Buy, that doesn't cost you anything except the profit you would have made on the sale. But in the library business, you get charged back from the person who goes to River Falls and takes the book out there because they came here at nine o'clock in the morning and you weren't open. That's crazy, but that's the way it works. So I believe as a good business proposition, we need to be open more hours, garner more income, and stop sending twenty-two thousand dollar checks to River Falls Library.
Laurie actually said what I was thinking, but I, I had a, I did have a smaller question on hours. Were those the previous, the hours of the previous library as well, if I recall, the same hours moved to the new library?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I just have a, I have a concern about a budget increase, and same as Laurie does. I, I think one of the statements you made is you want a librarian there who can, who can find, help patrons find books. Are, do we have, are the books on hand registered through any computer system? Do we have them, or, I mean, is it the old system or are they updated? Like, when I go to Best Buy, we're gonna use Best Buy, for an example, and I want to get a music CD, and there's no one there to help me, I can go to the little computer and, and then I can type in the name of the CD I'm looking for, and it directs me where to go. I'm just curious if we have a system in place that might help alleviate from staff.
Linda operates the library.
Our, our database is electronic, and we have, and we have stations near the circulation desk where you can look up and see if we have a title. We have two, two units upstairs, right by each reference desk, where you can type in a title and find out if it's in the library or not. One of the biggest, or the best parts of being a part of that, the Moore system, is if we don't have it and it's in the system, you can reserve it, and it can be brought to the library for you.
And I assume that people are aware of that computer system and utilize it, or did it...
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. That, I would say if we were to drop out of the Moore system, you would really hear about it. And, and just remember that, what is it, eighteen thousand it was a year for the Moore system? That's quite cheap when you figure out, I believe there's up to four million items out there that can be brought into the Hudson Library.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Alan?
I think, folks, what we would have to look at is we have X number of dollars available for all of our departments. We have a pool of money.
We have zero budgets for each of our other departments that we've, and I know this isn't a department, but our expenditures are at zero percent increase. I think, you know, we've been talking a lot about the economic times. I've had a widow call me and say, please don't raise my taxes, I can't afford to stay in my house. Or I had an unemployed gentleman call me and says, please, keep the budget down, I can't afford to pay anymore in property taxes. I know we don't, we only have a small percentage of, forty-eight percent of the budget is city taxes, so, but they call me because I'm their representative. So I think what we have to decide is, do we fund? It looks like expenditures are up twenty-one percent from two thousand ten to two thousand eleven. Whether or not that's a reasonable request from the information that was provided for us today, and my question is, where do you want to cut in the other departments? Is it the police department? Is it the fire department? Is it the Public Works? So I think that's one of the things we need to, there's just, I've, I have a commitment to have a zero-budget increase for this, and I, I believe that we should try to achieve that. And if we decide that we don't want to do that, that's fine, that's, that's a vote we have to take. But I think we need to consider where we're going to get the money to pay for this. It's not a lot of money, it's seventeen thousand dollars. But everybody, every department, I know we sat in Public Works and have gone through that budget, it's tough, particularly with our pay raises that we have for, for employees. We have to provide lesser, we have to do more with less. And that's my two cents on, on this comment. And I don't know if we're ready, I'm sorry, Roy, but I don't know if we're ready to make a decision on this tonight, without seeing what the other departments are coming back to us with. I'm not sure I can say, yes, I want to support this, or I say, I can't support that because we need something in public EMT or the Police Department or Public Works. But that's my two cents.
Would you indulge me in a few comments?
Sure.
I think, one thing for the public to remember is that while we're listening intently to the request and to all the details in the background going into it, we really don't have oversight or supervision over what's, the money's being spent on. We're not here to say, yes, hire an employee or don't hire an employee. Yes, kids, we'll increase the library hours, or no, they're gonna decrease the library hours. To tell you the truth, that's completely up to Mr. Schober and the library board. And in the last year to eighteen months, they have entertained the idea of cutting the library hours and then didn't, and so on, and they've done it, they don't come to us for that permission. The only control we have is in our annual appropriation, and it can never go down. By, by state law, we'd be kicked out of the, by the interlibrary loan service, ifless, if, if we lowered it, so it can never go down. It can only go up, and once it does go up, it can never go down from there. So there's no way under Wisconsin state law for you to say, we've got a temporary boost and then we're going back down again. That, that can't happen. The other thing is that we, we did run a surplus for a number of years. The library board very intentionally did that. So they bought fewer books, fewer CDs, had less library hours for, for a number of years, had fewer staff, very intentionally to try to build up money to buy a new library, to, to buy a new library. They were out, independent of the city, looking at land to buy, talking about possibilities where to buy the library. Now, what happened instead was the city used up our surplus. For those of you that wonder, how in the world did this happen and there was no levy, there was no referendum? We didn't borrow any money. We used our surpluses, and we drew down our surplus. We drew down our regular operating surplus, that's our monthly cushion. We drew it down for the city. We used up money that we've saved from when the Business Park closed. We used up money that we've saved from parking fines over the years. We used up every little nook and cranny and money that we've got to buy that building. And it was a good deal for the community. I'm proud that we did it. We got it at a good price. We sold the other two buildings. Our net price on the building purchase alone at this point is about one point seven million, and who would have ever thought we could have gotten into that building at a cost of one point seven million? That was good, and without borrowing money. But to do it, we drew down our surplus. There's nothing wrong with drawing down the surplus. What you're asking for here is you've, you've got a big surplus. What you're asking for is to increase your spending, and that's completely in your prerogative, and you're still sitting on a surplus. You really don't have to come to us to ask to increase your spending. But what you want is also to increase the support every year, and the proposal now, and the first I heard of it was that it's three, it's gonna be six and a half percent three years running, which is, excuse me, that's never happened before. That must be a long meeting, then. That it would be eighteen percent. And I told our joint library partners, Mr. Gavin and others were there, and other representatives of the Town of Hudson and so on, there is not an inherent increase here for you until you say so. We renegotiated our joint library agreement, and it says that the annual appropriation from all our library partners won't go up until they agree to it. And by my reading of it, they all have to agree to it. In other words, if we have to have a four-way consensus, and if the consensus is on six and a half percent, that's what it is. If the consensus is on three percent or on zero percent, that's what it is. I think that it, it muddies the waters a little bit for you to come and say, well, we need to, we need to do this, we need to do that, and that's gonna cost more and so on. You know, there are increased building costs when you have a larger building. That was, that is just, on its face, common sense. Everybody knew that. And when I proposed this idea first to the council in closed session and later to the library board, I said, you'll have to figure out how to bear the increased costs, and you cannot count on increased support from the partners, because they may not have it. They're gonna be in very tight budget times. You'll have your surplus, and you may have thought that you'd have to use that for remodeling or use that to buy land or whatever to get a new library. Under this scenario, you won't. But you can expect to spend that surplus down. You can, you can...
Use that surplus for operation.
Well, you can use it for capital, for your annual capital costs. You don't think you can buy a book or a shelf with it?
Book, yes.
A shelf? A book is not an operating cost, it's a capital cost. So is a, so is a shelf. Is a shelf not a capital cost?
Shelf is in-between. You can label it either way, but books are operating expenses.
Okay, well, let me tell you, every single year, there are lots of operating costs, and there are lots of capital costs. I mean, you talked about, let's have automatic door openers so that a disabled person in a wheelchair can get in there. That's a capital cost. There will be capital costs every year. You could use that money up. It's not that that money was somehow segregated and couldn't be used. It could be used for remodeling, painting, whatever. My point is that this isn't an either-or. It isn't either have a good library or not have a good library based on what the annual appropriation is. It's really a question of how fast are we gonna spend down that surplus? And I guess I'm here to tell you, and it might be different than the Town of Saint Joe, where I'm not sure that they had all that much skin in the game to buy that building, but I'll tell you what, we did. We gave until it hurt. And we drew down our, our cushion that we have for unforeseen expenses down to the very lowest that we possibly could. And the, and so it's not very easy for me to say, hey, you know what? Here, six and a half percent a year is now what we're going to give you extras so that you don't burn, burn through the-
And that's what we need to break even.
Well.
We're underwater. We're losing eighty thousand dollars this year. Yes, we all knew this thing was coming, it's here. And if this council doesn't want to recognize that we have these legitimate expenses, we'll just burn through the surplus because that's what we have to do to stay open. We're sending this city rent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we are now sawing the sawdust.
All right, we've got a motion, any other comments or discussion?
I'd like to make one last comment if I may, and that is-
Oh, I thought we were sawing sawdust.
Well, I'd like to get away from sawing sawdust and get an overview here, which is, we have a proposition for us to maintain a library and support a library. The entire picture is the city spent two and a half million dollars for this building, and we want the money back. And for us to get the money back, we have to have a viable library to buy it from us because they have the option to purchase this building. And while this, we thought was going to be a walk down the street and has turned into a tightrope walk instead because of the tight economic times, we must support this library so that they can show to philanthropic institutions that we are supporting it, because otherwise the philanthropics are going to say, well, why should we give you money? Your own community isn't supporting you. And you're going to spend down your surplus by a date certain. By a date certain, this library will be out of money unless we do something. And we recognize that in the joint agreement, that it's going to call for an increase to other partners' houses. It says so right there. I think it makes good business sense for us to support the library. And by the way, the amount of support we're talking about here is less than, if I round it up, it'll be two tenths of one percent of our annual budget. That is an increase in taxes if you have a pretty fancy home here in Hudson, that's an increase in your tax of six dollars a year. Six bucks. And that's what it is. So I believe that we must maintain a viable library in order to exhibit to the philanthropics so they can step in and say, you know what, we're with you here. We're going to fund you and you can buy the building from the city of Hudson. The taxpayers get back their two and a half million dollars so we can go and build the public safety building that we wanted to build. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Would you entertain comments from other citizens?
Oh, I think we're sawing sawdust at this point. Does anybody here need to hear from citizens before voting or want to? If so, speak up.
I could go ahead here if there's some-
All right. Let's come on up, let's try to be a minute each. It's already getting kind of late and as, believe it or not, this was one of the first items on our agenda tonight. Come on up, give your name and your address, and why don't you take about a minute to tell us what you think?
Little handout. Keep one for myself. Hang on, I'll keep one.
I'm Jeff Seis, address, live on Third Street here in town. I was on the library board about ten years ago. I've stayed active in the library. I just put this table together based on what statistics there are out there at the Department of Public Instruction. And the point here is that, you know, if you look at all three hundred and sixty libraries in the state, no matter what population range they serve, the, the average expenditures per person on a library is, you know, in that thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. Unless you're a really, really big city, if you're like Madison or Milwaukee, then you could be up in the forty dollar is the, the average range. If you look at Hudson in this year, two thousand eight, we spent twenty-two dollars and eight cents. We're like far, far below the average, so even with a big increase requested, we're going to be far, far below what, what the communities all over this state will spend on libraries. And we just, I think we have to, and if that doesn't hold true just for, you know, one year, but even for three years of this, to spend down the surplus, to get down to zero and have, have a balanced budget, we would still be spending a lot less than the average in the state.
Thank you. All right, ma'am, come on up.
Good evening, Gloria Kramer. I've been here a year and a half, I'm a volunteer, and I just want to express my concern about the handicap issue that you have over at the library right now. First of all, nobody can get in because there's nothing on the door, they don't have the push buttons. If, and it's a big if, they would allow handicapped people to cross the parking lot. I'm sorry, I don't have a little picture for you. If they would allow handicapped people to cross the parking lot on a crosshatch, yellow path, so they don't get killed by anybody driving, and come in on the lower level, which is the entrance that goes to the police, they would then be staying on ground level for their entire trip from their car, through the parking lot, through the door, to the elevator to get them upstairs. Those doors are incredibly heavy, they weigh a ton each. The sidewalk that is in front of the building, coming up from down at the driveway level, has an incline. And let me see you wheel your way. If I could bring a wheelchair down here, I would ask every one of you to do it. And you also need to consider the restrooms. You cannot open, can't wheel, open the door, wheel in, the door will close by itself, but you're having, you have an issue. And I just want you to know, you have an opportunity here, right now, to have the most wonderful cultural corridor over there on First Street with the Phipps, with the park, with the water, with the library, with the restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once. Going twice. Come on up. All right. Then, any final comments here before we vote?
Sure.
Yes.
I guess I reject the notion that we're not supportive of the library if we don't approve of a budget that includes the addition of a full-time individual. I think we've been very supportive. Other departments are not hiring people who've left or who've retired. This is not an environment for adding staff. You know, I wish we could have had this discussion before we purchased the building, but it's not an environment for, for adding people. Lots of folks are losing their jobs. It is a question of the level of service that people are getting and what people expect. And I've been in the library a lot, I ventured to guess I might be one of the heavier users of the library on this council. Have always had great service. Rarely need to even speak with the library and for help, but I've always been pleased with the service that we've gotten. I, I just, I reject the idea that we're not supportive if we don't agree with this budget increase, so.
Could, I have a go on, quick question. What's the rush, Roy? I mean, on Al's point, we need to look at our own budgets.
Giving all the chips in the right order, it makes it a lot harder if now, when I present to the town of Hudson, which has to say yes, and then to the village of North Hudson, which has to say yes.
To know that I went to the city where our home is and they said, we can't do it. They lacked the leadership to go beyond a zero percent, I mean, to cost point two, point two percent increase.
Well, insulting us doesn't get you anywhere, okay? I mean, we're intelligent enough to make decisions without that.
I did try to explain that a little bit this weekend, Roy, when I was saying, you know, you're asking us to do this completely separate from our budget process, and in here and in any budget process, to look at all the requests, of which these folks have seen no requests from any other department, other than they have the knowledge that all the departments have been instructed to come in with a zero percent budget. But they haven't seen any special requests or any kind of needs for anyone else, so they're all sitting there saying, well, okay, we approved this one. More than likely, that means some other department isn't going to get what they wanted or needed, and that's our job to balance. So you're essentially asking us to just void the budget process.
No, I'm asking to do what the town of St. Joseph did and treat this with special consideration. It's not voiding the budget process. But with all due respect, Randy, please do take this into consideration. If, if a no vote now means that it will be still reviewed, it can come up for reconsideration as part of the overall budget. Great.
Okay, anyone else?
I just wanted to say one thing. When we, when we speak of a nicer home where it's six dollars more on their taxes or whatever, that, and various statements like that, six dollars here, twenty dollars here, fifteen dollars here, if we think like that, we're not going to be successful at, at keeping taxes down and keeping a, a fair budget for the city as a whole. I mean, I don't, I don't like that type of thought process to just think that, ah, it might only cost my household six dollars for this, or it might only cost someone else's household ten dollars. It's not, that's not how I like to think about anything. And I want that to be, I just want that to be known, that I'm, that's not the way I'm going to consider my vote on this, that it may only increase a nicer house by six dollars. That's, that's two gallons of milk. You know, that's what I see, so.
Okay, anyone else? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
Four noes and two ayes. I think the motion failed. Is there any other motion on this top subject?
I would like to see this come back to our budget time.
You'd like to see it come back? Well, it will come back. I mean, it will come back in the budget with the same as last year, which was what we're, by our agreement, we have to do that each year. Any agreement requires a consensus and a vote by the council. Any increase requires agreement by the council. On the back page of their budget request, there were some other amounts. If you would increase three percent, five percent, and so on, I don't know if you perused that. Unless I hear any other action on that, we're moving on. Okay, the next item is from the finance committee als, or pardon me, from the public safety committee, it is number six, consider adopting state statutes regarding neighborhood electric vehicles. This came from the public safety committee. Legislature adopted a state law that gives the local municipalities, local governments, the right to either prohibit or to allow state, on our city streets, low-speed vehicles. And the terminology's actually been a little confusing, but some places in the administrative code, they're using the term neighborhood electric vehicles, other places, they're using the term low-speed vehicles. Miles, the same thing, these are cars, they're fully equipped with turn signals. Randy, you want to take it away?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Jewett, who originally brought this to public safety, is here and if he has anything to say.
Sure.
Mr. Jewett, if you want to say anything, you're, feel free, but I think this is a good idea. I think just kind of a housekeeping process to keep those individuals who choose to use those safe on our roads.
So, in, unless we have either an ordinance prohibiting them or an ordinance allowing them, we're not allowed to write any traffic citations for them. So for example, if they would fail to yield or some other traffic offense, until we have a local ordinance, we're not allowed to pursue that. The only, the only thing they can be written up for is if they haven't paid their state license. And so, we should do one or the other. The recommendation from the committee was to approve this. I had Jan draw up a draft ordinance, which is before you, if you, if that's the direction you want to go, we could suspend the rules towards adoption. It's only for streets, by state law, it's only allowed on streets that already have a speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour or less. And you can't cross a state highway unless the DOT has given permission to object to that, which it would be my intent that we would inform them that we intend to allow the crossing of Highway thirty-five and let them have their time to make comment about that one way or another. If they would not object, then that would also be allowed in the city.
Do you have a question for the council about how they feel about that particular item? Second Street downtown, where many businesses are located, it's also State Highway thirty-five. And the way this is written, the way it's put down by Paul Larson, Lieutenant Larson, is that NEV would not be allowed downtown on Second Street. The way he words it, if I remember correctly, is from north from I-94 all the way to the North Hudson Village limits. And we, we see quite often, particular of NEV down there all the time now, and frankly, I would like to encourage more NEVs down there rather than gas hogs in, in our downtown area. And I'm wondering, maybe Catherine can shed some light on this, if we run afoul of the state law by allowing electric vehicles downtown? The way the state has it right now, since that is, our second street is thirty-five, Highway thirty-five, they can't be there.
Well, yes, yes, they can. If our ordinance allows them within the city and we submit to the DOT the fact that we intend to allow them on thirty-five, they'll have a twenty-one day comment period and so on and go through a process, and if there are no objections, it will be so.
Because it is under thirty-five mile per hour speed limit downtown.
So do we really need this ordinance?
We do need to either, and it already came up, I guess that's how this came to the public safety was, I'm not sure exactly what the incident was and it may not be pertinent here, but if there would be a traffic stop, let's say failure to use your signal, they don't fall under the normal traffic rules unless we have a law that either prohibits them, in which case they shouldn't be out there at all, or allows them, in which case they come under the state's traffic laws. Otherwise, they don't.
Don't bicycles have to follow the traffic rules and-
But bicycles are already covered elsewhere in the law. These are, what they did when they gave local control was they took them out of the normal traffic control rules and it's as if they're not regulated unless you choose to regulate them.
Well, what we're doing is taking official recognition that they exist.
But let me correct something, and Mr. here, what was presented to us and we read it here is that any vehicle, any, these vehicles cannot be on our streets.
Until we put in a local ordinance. That's, that's how this was read.
That's not true.
Because it says the governing body may by ordinance allow the use of.
That was changed in the two thousand nine, two thousand ten session.
Oh, see, that was the-
Changed from prohibiting unless it's allowed to allowed unless prohibited.
So they're allowed if you do nothing, is my understanding of it.
That was, was not the way we were going down through, which is-
And I was not explaining, Mr. Jewett, that was also a council reform.
But the issue is they are allowed without regulation unless you prohibit them, or they are allowed under regular traffic laws if you allow them.
Well, and that is why we brought this forward, because we want to allow them on our streets and we're under the assumption that we had to pass an ordinance to allow them.
I want to suspend the rules.
Second.
There's a motion, second to suspend the rules, any discussion on the motion? We'll call vote.
Yes.
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 Move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion to suspend passed, we've got a motion on the second to adopt the ordinance.
Can I, as a second, or can I ask for a modification to that? As Mr. O'Malley pointed out, to include Second Street as a, a route that can be used by motor, by-
Well, it's on there, it's just unless the DOT objects.
Okay. I just want to call that out specifically so that it gets handled.
First section says all streets, that, or number two is all streets which have a speed limit under thirty-five, that would include second.
That includes second, okay, yep.
And the second part is, but we will have to submit that to public comment through the state process.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. The ordinance is adopted. We'll move on to number, let's see, oh, unfinished business, update on projects. We'll move on to number, let's see, oh, unfinished business, update on projects.
Hello.
The council may have noticed that they've begun moving curb up on Hagan Street. And we anticipate that the first part of October, that'll be paved. Also, the seal coating and slurry seal work is completed for the two thousand ten street improvement project. And now that it's been swept up, you know, it's looking, from our perspective, really good.
Ask the question, was it fixed Laurel Avenue? It's like you had rumble strips throughout the whole thing.
Yeah, there was a slight miscommunication in who was gonna sweep that. But it has been swept now, and.
And we used our sweeper equipment, will we be reimbursed for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Around Jacobson's Woods too, it looks like there's a lot of gravel left on that today. I saw there this afternoon, doesn't look like that's been swept around either.
Okay, Tom, do you know the plans as far as sweeping Jacobson's Woods?
We'll get that out.
Okay, thank you. Couple of days. There's a little bit of crack ceiling left, and some striping and cleanup, and that's essentially what remains on that project.
And is that done, no more slurry seal anywhere, no more of the chip seal? That's it?
That's, that's correct.
The neighborhoods that got crack seal only, that's been done?
Yep.
They are done, that's it.
The, I'm sorry, the, the crack ceiling?
The second step, I mean, the neighborhoods that got slurry seal, got crack seal first, and then slurry seal, right?
Yeah, they're done, they're done. Yeah, and I understand, you know, I had a few calls and concerns about the excessive rock, and, you know, we did bid that square yard, and so, you know, you didn't pay for extra rock, per se, and, and the sweeping will be billed back, so. That's all set there.
Can I make one quick comment?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know there was work being done, I think on Saturday, on Third Street. Just as a, it was, it was sort of a surprise, it said roadwork ahead, and there were actually workers in the road. I think that's a section of the city that should just be closed when there's work being done on it. This is the second time I've had that sort of situation, and it's an area that can be extremely dangerous when there's not work being done. So if, just in the future, if, if you guys could consider closing it off.
Okay, okay.
I missed that, what?
You mean the cell where you go by the, the car lane?
Pass the, no, right here, past the old hospital, down to City Hall.
Yeah.
And there was, they were crack filling, or it was a dangerous situation, and the road should've just been closed. I don't think it took that long, but I came around the curve, and there's someone standing in the middle of the road, and it wasn't apparent that was what was going on, so.
Okay, okay, no, that's, that's good information, and we did get other comments regarding some of the residential communications, and, and how we may be able to improve the, the mapping and, and the communication there, because with some of the rain too, there's a little hit and miss as far as when work was gonna be done, and how to move cars to where, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Anything else on the street projects? All right, what else you got, Chuck?
Nothing too much, just, there's been some striping up at Heritage Market. We have met to discuss kind of remaining work items, and we're working through that on all of the Heritage Green type of improvements there. Everything else is written down, I don't know if there's any other specific questions for me?
You know, I don't know if it's pertinent, I'm probably a little bit off the subject, but Grandview Drive and Seventeenth, so it's going through Stone Pine, down the dip, and so on. Years ago, when that first opened to traffic, and I was an older person, and speeds were high, one day I commented that, boy, if you drive twenty-five, people actually pass you, because it feels big and new, and, you know, you're getting passed. And within about a week, they double striped that, all the way through there, and it's been double striped ever since. I'm not sure there was ever any official council action, it just got double striped. And I'm wondering, now that you've done that, you know, much of that has been, is, is there some traffic criteria for when a road is, is double striped in the city? Because honestly, I think it's almost counterproductive. I mean, when it gets double striped, now it really feels like it's got a highway, because you almost feel like you're on highway markings, so I don't know. It's just a comment, must be the next step, right, is to put the markings back on, the stop.
Yes, we, that is correct.
And that's coming, has that already been bid, and you're already, and the horse has left the barn on that?
Uh, no, from the standpoint that if there were modifications to the, to the double yellow, we could certainly do that. And yeah, that's the one thing about wide roads, you know, people tend to drive what they're comfortable driving on a road. So if you have a big, wide-open road, people generally drive, tend to drive faster. Yeah, as far as whether or not having it double-yellow or something else, what would, you know, the pros and cons of that, I guess I'd have to talk to some of our transportation engineers. Intuitively, I would think, you know, you're better off putting the double-yellow bag, so people.
As it was, okay. All right.
A median would slow, an actual median with trees in it?
A median with trees? Or a speed bumps every hundred yards? That was suggested one time, that was called traffic, traffic calming.
Stop signs.
Otherwise known as speed bumps.
The deer crossing tend to slow people down.
Okay, Chuck, let's get back on track here, we're losing control.
Anything else for me?
That's it.
Run.
Run.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, oh, civil defense, okay, this, I've got two items, I guess if you permit me, because they're related, I put under Communications and Recommendations of the Mayor, which is coming next, an item, and this came out of Public Safety Committee, I know had some discussion about, you know, do we have an Emergency Management Director? Who's got my communication on appointing Eric Christensen? Oh, here, I guess I found it. And so, coming up under item B, I've got an item to appoint Eric Christensen as Deputy Emergency Government Director for the City of Hudson. But I'd, I'd like to give you a little background on this. This is something over the past year, we've had some discussion. It might be boring, but I think it's important, and it came up in committee, so here you go. I mean, we've had a really outdated chapter, and it's my intent to introduce this draft fourteen dash one, and refer it back to the Public Safety Committee for work. We don't need to discuss that in depth tonight, but I've got some changes here that would modernize this whole civil defense, which is really left from ages ago, back into a modern emergency management. It incorporates the fact that we have intergovernmental agreements with the county, and it also incorporates the NIMS Incident Management System, which we have adopted, and we are basically required to be following, but our ordinance is sort of nineteen fifties or sixties, and was far before NIMS. So it needs some work. The committee can work with Eric and other staff to make sure that this meets our needs. But as it comes to the actual control items, I wanna draw your attention to a couple of things. And first, just from my memo here on the issue sheet, a series of points. We entered into an agreement with St. Croix County for municipal emergency management, and we did that years ago. We did make an amendment to our chapter nineteen, which was civil defense, to incorporate that. And we made the county employee who holds the title County Municipal Emergency Government Director, we made that person our city's emergency director. And this was by agreement with the county. So the county would provide and pay for the person, and they agreed at that time that they would have a full-time person that would do this, not just for the county, but for the municipalities, so long as we adopted a parallel ordinance, which we did. So that joint director position was created back in nineteen ninety-three, ordinance three fifteen. I included a copy of the ordinance in your packet tonight. That person also by the agreement has the additional duties and responsibilities of serving as the Municipal Emergency Government Director for all the municipalities. So we've essentially had the county director as our municipal director for many years now, for about seventeen years. Under that agreement, we can also appoint in a deputy Emergency Management Director. Now whether that's smart or not, is something for the committee to take up. I'll tell you, it, it may or may not be good for us. Because in our agreement, it is the responsibility of the county employee to draft the plans, implement the plans, construct training, all of that. If we have a deputy, they can delegate all that down to the deputy, which is essentially what's been happening. And so, we've been doing all of it in-house, even though the original idea was they'd have a full-time person that would do this. We're the largest municipality in the county, and so we should be taking up a considerable proportion of that full-time person's time. I mean, I've said maybe even a day a week ought to be spent just on city training, coordination, communication. We're easily twenty percent of what their duties might be. So that person by the ordinance is supposed to develop emergency plans for joint action municipalities, which we are one of. That has not been happening, we've been doing our own. And then each municipality may appoint a Deputy Emergency Government Director. Now, Eric has essentially had that title. In our official emergency plan right now, I included the signature page of it, and you can see, Eric signed as Deputy Emergency Management Director, because that was the line that was created. And he signed it, but I'm not sure that meant he ever was officially appointed, but for, I mean, when the emergency hit, I'm sure he would've been it. So he hasn't been formally appointed. Now whether you wanna do that now, or whether you wanna reconsider these amendments to chapter nineteen of our code, is up to you. I'll tell you that in the mission statement of the St. Croix Municipal Office of Emergency Management, it includes, right, I included for you right off their webpage, right today, the section where it says it is in their mission to develop the municipal emergency operations plans, and to teach, develop, and coordinate the training plans and exercises, et cetera. That has not been happening. Haven't they, you've been doing tabletops? You're right, we've been doing tabletops. So they're in a coordination role, but Eric has had, I mean, what percentage of your job would you say has been going towards emergency, emergency management, planning, developing, training? Twenty percent. So the idea is, they're supposed to be providing the employee, and that hasn't been happening. In fact, they went through a period this past year where they talked about not having that position. They've downsized the position. I included both the old job description and the new job description. Frankly, some of the things that they agreed in our intergovernmental agreement to, aren't in the job description anymore, and we may wanna pursue that. If you appoint a deputy, then all they have to do is say, yeah, it's our responsibility, but we're delegating it to your deputy, which that's exactly where we've been. And they've delegated it to the deputy, even though according to our research, you've never really been officially appointed as a deputy. So if the question is, do we have an Emergency Management Coordinator? Yes, we do, at the county, and we've had that for seventeen years. The, the question then, if you'll go back to our ordinance, the revised ordinance or the existing ordinance, we could, under this, appoint our own Emergency Management Director. Used to be called Civil Defense Director. Okay, if you change the title, it would be Emergency Management Director. To my mind, we'd be going a step backwards, because we honestly, we oughta be relying on that as a centralized function. Doesn't happen that often, when it does. We shouldn't lose any control or local say-so, because ultimately, it comes to the council or to the mayor to, to delegate official power to that person, but they have the most training. They should, they're working on this full-time, every day. They should be in the best position to do it.
I have a question, what about the City of New Richmond? Do they have someone comparable to you also taking on those responsibilities?
Yeah, I believe so, I believe there's somebody in that is acting.
Because, I just remember from being on Emergency Management, we did tabletop exercises throughout the county. You know, kinda went into different towns and.
If requested by that local media.
Do we request it, or do we just choose to do our own? And sometimes we do our own?
Right.
Okay, it's not that it's not available to us.
It is available, the training's always available, just the issue is the operational planning, the writing plans, updating the plans, and things like that. And we have to make sure that locally, that everybody is trained up to the new, current standards.
If you're gonna have a deputy, and the deputy's just gonna be delegated to by, by someone at the county, and someone at the county isn't doing anything for us other than delegating, then the question might be, why don't we just appoint our own Emergency Management Director? Which, if we could. And, or, we could follow the terms of the agreement from nineteen ninety-three, which hasn't been done. I'd like the committee to look at this some more. Basically, I'm bringing this up to you, if you wanna appoint Eric as a deputy, it's something we can do tonight, and we can undo it. Apparently, it's never formally been done. Eric told me he's willing to take the appointment. If you wanna postpone it, we can do that, and you can take up the whole, the whole matter.
The, the reason this came up at safety is, you know, kind of the question where the rubber meets the road, we can say they're supposed to do it, or we're supposed to do it, but nobody owns it. And, you know, between, and, you know, you can talk about how serious an issue it is, but we need somebody in charge. And if we appoint them as a deputy and decide to, at some point, change the title to Director, we can do that in the future, correct? But in this point, we can say, as you've said here, it's, it's no longer in the job description anymore of Eric's to be that deputy, that was removed. Oh, the county one, all right. So there's, we were very, you know, we, we sat in on, Alder Manyokam and I sat in on a emergency siren issue. How often do they go off, and how are they used, and, and it came up in that instance, we said, well, who owns this? What's part of it owned by them, part of it owned by us, but there was this gray area we wanna get cleaned up.
I'd like to hear from the county, actually, on what they see as their role.
Well.
What's the difference?
It's how they manage it.
Still gonna be it.
It's, it's still gonna be one or the other, so why not just appoint him, and we, it's kind of the cart before the horse, but.
Okay, the original idea was, there's state laws, it's one sixty-six, I think chapter one sixty-six, it says, you know, the county will have someone, and. City will have someone. We will have someone, and we've fulfilled that by having the county person.
Right.
We've got a written, signed agreement that says, county, you will provide it. It's quaint, it's quaint. It talks about that they'll provide the office space, and they'll provide the stenographic help for the person. I mean, it's, it's outdated. You gotta love it. What?
Do they still know that?
Well, you know, that might be a little fuzzy for them, because as they've gone through this, I mean, I, I think they could withdraw from that agreement if they wanted to, they haven't done that, and so the agreement still stands. And, yeah, I think we should have, I mean, here's, here's the thing. If you wanna know, we need someone in charge, we have someone in charge.
And if something happened tomorrow, would they know they're in charge?
Well, if something happened tomorrow, the responsibility in emergency actually falls with the mayor, and there's a line of succession that's established in our plan, and yes, we have a plan. And in the plan, it says there's a NIMS, we'll follow the NIMS system, which essentially, there's gonna be an incident commander, and it's gonna ripple up just right through, you've all gone through the NIMS training. We just have never adopted that in our ordinance book, we should.
I agree.
But that is our plan. And so, I mean, I think we're well-covered, but this issue of the, hey, it's not an emergency, but what are we gonna do for training, planning, updating all these plans? It's time-consuming bureaucratic work. The agreement was that the county would provide a person to do this. And now it's slipped down to the fact that we're doing it ourselves, which, that should be changed. I'm reading this nineteen-ten, and referring it to the Public Safety Committee, no further discussion unless you wish to. Any other discussion? I wanna cut you off, but it's getting late, so if you don't want to, we'll send it to Public Safety unless there's objection. I'd like to reappoint Kevin Vance to the Public Utility Commission and get your approval for that.
So moved.
The motion is second, is that in the session? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Would you like to appoint Eric as Deputy Emergency Government Director formally tonight? If so, make a motion of that effect, otherwise, we can postpone. If so, make a motion of that effect, otherwise we can postpone that.
I would like to move that Eric is the deputy director.
Second.
And there's a second, any discussion?
Didn't you just say that if we appoint him to that position, the county may simply absolve their responsibility and delegate it all to Eric? I thought that's why we were going to-
Well, the state statute says we're going to have a state, a city person anyway.
No, it says we'll appoint a person, we've appointed the county person years ago.
I don't think we're ready to-
And they promptly forgot that.
Yes, exactly, and they're doing this.
I don't think we're ready without, I still would like to hear from the county as to what they see.
If you appoint Eric, then he will operate under the administrative direction of the county emergency government director. Eric will now be told what to do by the county person. So instead of coordinating with them, he's not getting any pay for this job.
How do you feel about this, Eric?
Another one, huh?
Well, if Eric, if Eric doesn't want to do it, I'll, I'll rescind my second.
Not that he's-
And the other- He said he'd do it, he told me he'd do it if he's appointed. If you want to appoint him, I'm not sure it's smart, but.
I, and the other piece that I understood is that he had been working on it, but has set it aside because it's supposed to be done by the county now, so we have really nobody actively doing this.
We need to have that meeting with the new county emergency management director, and point out what's in our intergovernmental agreement, and see what they're willing to do for us.
As, as much as I appreciate that Eric wants to, to do this, I, I tend to agree with Lori that maybe we should figure out what's going on on their end before we just add the workload to Eric that might be unnecessary. Even though he's doing it, maybe we can relieve him of some of this stuff so he can concentrate on other things.
Should have her come to the next Public Safety, Public Safety meeting.
Now you're talking.
We're going to just send it to Public Safety.
Do you want to rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my second, we can chat about it, we can chat about it.
We've got a rescission.
Whatever, we'll chat about it.
That's a big confusion.
Motion has been rescinded, are there any other motions?
Send it to Public Safety.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to send it to Public Safety, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks say no. That moves us down to, where does that move us? Communications and any items for future agendas from any older person.
Yeah, I want a new chair.
Okay, we've got a, Gorilla Glue fixes those chairs, we'll get it fixed for next time. Calm down, you don't have to hang on that tight during these meetings.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if, if, Noah, if you're here, if you can zoom in on this, I wanted to point out to all the citizens of Hudson, to be careful, look at your mail today and tomorrow, you're going to be receiving this card from Violia, the people who would take your, your rubbish, and it's very informative, it is about a mandatory use of bio, not biodegradable, of A S T M six, D sixty-four hundred bags. If they're marked biodegradable, that doesn't mean they, they, they measure up. The state of Minnesota, as of October first, will not accept any other kind of bags, and Minnesota's where we truck our garbage to, our yard waste to. And so you can find out all the information you need on who sells these bags at bpiworld.org. Now, this is confused by the fact that they labeled it with City of Hudson Fall Leaf Cleanup is Here. This confuses you, thinking it has to do with this fall leaf collection, it has nothing to do with it. This is for stuff that's collected at your curbside. Of course, we'll have the fall leaf collection later on, but please get the right kind of bags, or they will not, Violia, as of October first, will not pick up your yard waste.
All right, thank you, any other older person?
City attorney, city administrator.
I need you to work on the budget, and hopefully we'll be able to finance.
All right, well, thanks a lot, this is kind of a long night tonight with the special meeting, but I think it was productive. We're ready to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks say no. All right, we're adjourned.